We will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we join the members of Columbus City Council this evening as they meet in session to conduct the business of our city. We gather here tonight in a spirit of profound sorrow as we join those who mourn for the tragic deaths of the minister and eight parishioners of Mother Emanuel African Methodist Episcopal Church in Charleston, South Carolina. We know that you, Lord, are with those who mourn and give them comfort. We also commend those who have died to your loving mercy. We know in our hearts that we must find the will to forgive the obviously disturbed young man who perpetrated this senseless tragedy. However, as a nation, we need to confront once again the realities of racism and gun violence and mental illness. May your presence among us tonight, Lord, help us to find consolation. May we pray for those who have perished and for their families, and may you give comfort and consolation to the families and friends who mourn the loss of their loved ones. May they rest in peace. Amen.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
With the reading of the journal. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Yes, I do have one additional item dated June 18th, 2015. To the council of the city of Columbus, Ohio, the undersigned Assessment Equalization Board appointed and acting in the pursuance of your ordinance 1542-2015 passed on the eighth day of June 2015 respectfully submit the following. As our report related to the estimated assessment for the Discovery Special Improvement District, the board recommends that the estimated assessment for parcel number 010-052596-00 located at 300 East Long Street be reduced to $350 per year due to the property's use in part as a church. That is signed by Trent Smith, member, David Paul, member, and Annie Womack, member. And that's it.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. Any comments or resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Harden.
Thank you, President Ginther. As I begin to read this resolution, I'd ask for the folks from Coda to come up to the dais. I am honored to recognize Central Ohio Transit Authority and four gentlemen in particular, Mr. Howard Yoder, Mr. Tom Belcher, Mr. Don Rednauer, and Mr. Steve Woods for their participation in the 40th Annual American Public Transportation Association's International Bus Rodeo. These four men brought home the Grand Champion Award back to Columbus for their abilities in demonstrating safe driving techniques and vehicle maintenance skills in an intense competition format. And it's my understanding that the Grand Champion Award combines scores from driving and maintenance to determine the winner. And so, we here in Columbus and the 19 million Coda riders are served by the world champions in safe driving and efficient maintenance. I'll just read a small piece of the resolution to acknowledge and to congratulate the Central Ohio Transit Authority for winning the Grand Championship Award at the 40th Annual American Public Transportation Association's International Bus Rodeo on May 5th. And be resolved by this council of the city of Columbus that we recognize, support, and congratulate you guys for that great honor. And if there are no questions, our councilmember Paley.
I had the fortunate or unfortunate, I guess, opportunity to drive in one of the rodeos by public officials that Coda put on or puts on on a year or did. And I have to say, it was not, it was very difficult. And even with the coaches that I had, thank you, Coda, I just don't imagine how you can do that every day and bring home the championship. So, thank you for your talents in providing us with the transportation services that you as well as the rest of the Coda staff does for the city of Columbus. So, from somebody who has had a little bit of experience, thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Congratulations. Mr. Sti, would you like to come to the podium and then introduce the gentleman who actually brought this award home for us?
Thank you. President Ginther, councilmember Harden, and members of council, I want to thank you for this recognition. There's a lot that could be said about this. This is an annual event that's been going on for 40 years, and this is the first time that Coda has won the Grand Championship at this international bus rodeo. There's a lot that we can say about it, but I will say one thing and one thing only, and then turn it over to our Vice President of Operations for a few additional comments. And that is, this accomplishment really represents the quality of the employees that we have providing public transit service here in our community. These guys represented Coda very well and have been working at it for the last several years, and each year they've gotten a little bit closer to winning that grand prize. They did it this year, and it's representative of the kind of employee that we have serving this community. So, we thank you for your recognition, and I thank this group for their great service and for their accomplishment in winning the championship.
Just briefly, city council president, council members, audience. Clinton Forbes, Vice President of Operations for Coda. We are extremely proud of this achievement. Just to put in perspective, there are over 75 transit properties, not nationally, but internationally, that compete in this event annually. As Curtis mentioned, it's been going on for 40 years, so we are competing with the likes of the large transit agencies like the Washington Metro Area Transit Authority, WAMADA, CTA, Chicago, Boston, big transit organizations with a lot of resources, and we brought home the champion. As I've said, there's just not one champion in this community now. The college football champions, the Ohio State Universities, we now have Coda as the grand champions. So, this is a great achievement. We like that. We are also going to ensure that the community knows that this is the home of the grand champions, and so, with the talents of our folks in vehicle maintenance, we've wrapped a bus that will be riding around in this community to let folks know that we are the grand champions here in Columbus.
I did the easy part driving. The rest of them was mechanics, and they really have a difficult job of finding the defects and doing all the work.
Don Rednauer, one of the mechanics, and it's overall, it's team effort. Takes the driver and the mechanics in order for all the points to be added together to come out where we did. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Steve Woods. And yeah, what Don says is correct. You're going against the best of the best. So, we're very proud that we was able to bring it all together and bring it home for Central Ohio.
Congratulations.
I would like to just add one thing. It wasn't just us either. We had a lot of support from our president, all the way down to our intermediate management. They really supported us in this, and that's what it takes.
Finally, I just want to say, there's one competitor who could not be here. I just want to mention his name again. Tom Belcher, one of the mechanics, just unfortunately couldn't be here today, but it's total team effort, and we appreciate what they've accomplished.
That's it.
Thank you, councilmember Harden. Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. There's two pieces of information I'd like to bring up tonight. The first one is unfortunate, sad news of a Columbus Police Department officer that passed away today. Officer Joseph Polan, who was a member of CPD, suffered a heart attack recently and unfortunately succumbed to that illness. So, if it's okay with you, Council President, let me take a moment of silence and recognize him and his service to the city of Columbus and certainly his family. And then the second is, yeah, I told my daughter Stella, Council President, who made me a tie for Father's Day, and she said, Daddy, will you wear the tie to work? So, I just wanted to put it on for her and officially fulfill that promise to her that I'm wearing her tie. So, not going to let down my little two-year-old Stella. So, that's all, Council President. Thank you.
You can return home tonight. So, thank you, Councilmember Klein. President Proton Mills? Councilmember Page? Councilmember Paley?
I just have a couple of announcements. I have another public service announcement. This weekend coming up is the Hilltop Bean Dinner that's been going on since 1926. The Hilltop Bean Dinner is June 27th at Westgate Park, 455 Southwest Gate Avenue from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There is a car show that they have every year from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and I've been told, although unaffiliated with the Hilltop Bean Dinner, the Hilltop Business Administration or the Hilltop Business Association, the Hilltop does have their annual garage sale, which I'm always in attendance at, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So, if you want to have the best bean dinner in the world, go to Historic Hilltop Bean Dinner this weekend. If you want to say hello to me, I should be there between 10:00 and 10:45. So, I look forward to seeing everyone at the Hilltop Bean Dinner. And second, in light of what's been going on in the country as well as in our community, Director Napoleon Bell from our Community Relations Commission has asked to make a statement. Director Bell?
Well, thank you so much, Councilmember Paley, President Ginther, and members of council. I do want to announce, though, on July 30th, our office will be commemorating the 50th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act and history of the Columbus Community Relations Commission at Columbus State's Workforce Development Building located at 315 Cleveland Avenue. The doors will open at 11:00 a.m., and the program will begin promptly at 11:30 and end at 1:30 p.m. Ben Espy is our keynote speaker, and you will also hear from Judge Yvette McGee Brown, James Stowe, Mayor Coleman, former Mayor LaShaka, and others. As we plan, though, for this event, I can't help but pause when I hear of the shootings in South Carolina of nine innocent people in a place of worship. I am reminded of the 1960s church bombings in Birmingham, Alabama. The hate and violence still exist today, even striking Columbus when sadly, four people were gunned down in a home on Hudson Avenue. Unfortunately, hate and violence is alive and well, and each of us must get engaged to turn hate into love. Our office has kicked off a new Facebook page, Stop Hate, Columbus Collaborates. We want to hear about what communities and individuals are doing to stop hate and reduce violence in our city and beyond. We will also be posting positive stories locally and from around the country to inspire and engage communities, and we would also would like to hear about your inspiring story. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "The ultimate weakness of violence is that descending spiral, begetting the very thing it seeks to destroy. Instead of diminishing evil, it multiplies it. Through violence, you may murder the liar, but you cannot murder the lie nor establish the truth. Through violence, you may murder the hater, but you do not murder hate. In fact, violence merely increases hate, so it goes. Returning violence for violence multiplies violence, adding deeper darkness to a night already devoid of stars. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." So, I'm asking all of us and those in the viewing audience, the time is now to get engaged to stop the hate. So, for tickets and more information, also to commemorate our 50th anniversary of Voting Rights Act, please call our office at 645-1996 or go to our website at CRC.Columbus.gov for those tickets. And then also, please tweet your comments to hashtag StopTheHate. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Bell. That's all I have this evening. Councilmember Ginther, President.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. Yes, President Ginther, I have some resolutions this evening. The first resolution I have is 0169X, and I'm going to ask the noble Douglas Ricard, the 33rd illustrious potentate number 53, and the other members to walk towards the podium. And this resolution is to celebrate June of 2015 as Men's Health Month and to recognize Alababa Temple number 53, AEAONMS, for their commitment to raising diabetes awareness in Central Ohio. Whereas the Alababa Temple number 53, the ancient Egyptian Arabic Order Nobles of the Mystic Shrine, is committed to raising diabetes awareness in Central Ohio. And whereas Alababa does this work in conjunction with its national organization, the Ancient Egyptian Arabic Order Nobles of the Mystic Shrine, which has adopted diabetes awareness as one of its central philanthropic programs. And whereas diabetes is a disease that affects the body's ability to produce or respond to insulin, a hormone that allows blood glucose to enter the cells of their body and be used for energy. Without insulin, the body cannot control the amount of sugar in the blood, which could lead to problems such as blindness, heart disease, kidney failure, stroke, and leg amputations. And whereas nearly 26 million people in the United States have diabetes and more than 200,000 of those living in Central Ohio. And whereas non-Hispanic blacks are 1.2 times more likely than non-Hispanic whites to be diagnosed with diabetes and two times more likely to die from the disease. Whereas the Alababa Temple works to raise awareness in Central Ohio through various programs, and most notably, the Nobles for Diabetes Street Awareness Campaign in partnership with the Central Ohio Diabetes Association. The temple also participates in the African-American Male Wellness Walk as well as diabetes and other illness health fairs in conjunction with the Daughters of ISIS AEAONMS PHA. And whereas the Alababa Temple number 53 is working with many community partners to raise diabetes awareness in this community and advocate the importance of nutrition and wellness in Central Ohio. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the Safe Columbus, that this council recognizes the importance of Men's Health Month and commends the Alababa Temple number 53 for their work to raise diabetes awareness in Central Ohio. I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Noble Ricard, the podium is yours.
President Ginther, Councilwoman Tyson, members of the city council, thank you very much for having us. We're a very old organization. We've been around for a long time providing charity for both this community and around the world in itself. Traveling with me, we have my deputy of the Oasis, who's in charge of all of Columbus. His name is Rufus Gripper. And then we have our past potentate, Jeff Turner, and also my high priest, Rodney Blunt. We work diligently throughout the year on several different campaigns. We have a children's Christmas that we do right down on Long Street where we actually give free toys and a lunch for the children in the Long Street. And also, we have a Halloween party where we do a haunted basement where they can come in and not worry about traveling the sometimes unsafe neighborhoods, and they can come into our temple and actually have candy and other treats and just share a good time under a safe environment. So, again, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to come before you. Thank you for the resolution. I will take that back to my leadership and let them know that you recognized us. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much. I now have a number of resolutions in regards to the trustees of the sinking fund, and what I'm going to do is ask all the individuals to come to the front of the room. I'm going to read the resolutions, and they all pretty much will say the same thing, but I'll just want to acknowledge each of the individuals for getting these resolutions. And so, resolution number 0170-2015, and the first one is to honor and recognize Stan A. Uchita for his years of service as a trustee for the Office of the Trustees of the Shrinking Fund for the city of Columbus. Resolution 0171X is resolution to honor and recognize Mark J. Howard for his years of service as a trustee for the Office of the Trustees of the Shrinking Fund of the city of Columbus. Resolution number 0173 is to honor and recognize Jackie Winchester for his years of service as a trustee for the Office of the Trustees of the Shrinking Fund of the city of Columbus, Ohio. And 0174-X-2015 to honor and recognize Craig E. Babbitt for his years of service as trustee for the Office of the Trustees of the sinking fund of the city of Columbus in Columbus, Ohio. These gentlemen have been appointed by different mayors, and the mayors, I'm going to give you some years, have either been Michael Coleman or they have been Gray LaShaka. And I'll just take the time just to read maybe the first part of the body so you know how long they've been served. Well, I'll read one in complete resolution. The first for Stanley Uchita is whereas Mr. Uchita was originally appointed as a trustee for the Office of Trustees of the Shrinking Fund by Mayor Michael Coleman with the concurrence of the Columbus City Council, May of 2002. And whereas by the virtue of the city charter, sections 133 and 137, the Office of the Trustees of the Shrinking Fund was charged with the responsibility of payment and administration of the city's general obligation debt service. And whereas by a majority vote of the electorate in November 2014, the aforementioned city charter sections were removed and the duties of the debt administrator, administration, and payment will be assumed by the city auditor and the city treasurer's office effective July 1 of 2015. And whereas Mr. Uchita set a high standard for professionalism and competency in the area of debt service administration and selfishly shared his wealth of knowledge and experience over the past 13 years. Now therefore, be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus, this council does hereby honor and recognize Mr. Stanley Uchita for the many years of service to the citizens of Columbus. I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Again, the next one was 0171X is for Mr. Mark Howard, and Mr. Howard has been, was appointed by Mayor Gray LaShaka, and he's served in this capacity since 1997. And again, he has set high standard for professionalism and competency in the area of debt service and administration, and he has over 18 years' worth of experience with the city of Columbus. I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Mr. Jack Winchester was originally appointed as a trustee by Mayor Michael Coleman, and he set a high standard of professionalism and competency in the area of debt service administration and selfishly served this community for the past nine years. I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And then again, resolution 0174X, Mr. Craig Babbitt for his years of service. And again, he was appointed to the sinking fund by Mayor Michael Coleman, and he has provided the service to our city for the last three years. I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And now I'm going to allow one. Mr. Dorian, do you want to make any comments first about these individuals?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and all council members. These gentlemen that you're honoring tonight, these are some of the people, Columbus citizens, who have devoted many years, many hours, and their talents and skills to assisting the city in its financial arena. With the charter amendment, as Ms. Tyson indicated, their duties are being transferred to the city auditor, city treasurer, and director of finance. And so, with that additional duty, I say to each of them, don't leave town, guys, because we may be calling on you. The one gentleman to my left is David Irwin, who is the executive secretary of the sinking fund, and David will be coming on the auditor's staff July 1st. So, again, I can't see all of you from behind the chair, but you have my sincere thanks for your help, and God bless you.
Thank you. We really do appreciate their service to our city. Just a couple of announcements. One, on Wednesday, June 24th, the Jewish Family Services will host its second annual entry-level job fair at Embassy Suites, 2886 Airport Drive. To get more information about this particular job fair, please call 614-559-0184. Also, Fast Path is a program that certainly the city of Columbus is working with, is funded as funding, and with the Columbus State Community College, and we're looking for individuals who may be wanting to get a job in the logistics field. And so, we'll be having classes, we'll be getting July the 6th, and the class is scheduled for six weeks. You must call by June 23rd if you're interested in the logistics field and the four-week training. Please call 614-287-3663 and ask for Linda Schaefer. And lastly, on Sunday, June 28th, we know we talked to this, I know, earlier in the prayer about praying for individuals with mental health. This Sunday, the National Alliance on Mental Illness Franklin County will host its 2015 NAMI Walk at Wolf Park, and the walk begins at 10:30. And the walk begins at 10:30, check-in at 9:30. And the purpose of the walk is to help change minds one step at a time and raise awareness about mental health. If you're interested in participating in this Sunday, please call 614-507-6264. And this event will also consist of activities for kids, inflatables, balloon arts, face painting, et cetera, and free wellness information. So please stop out for the wellness walk. And that's all I have on my committee this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials, City Auditor, City Attorney? May we have, oh, at this time, I request the following ordinances be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda. Utilities Committee, 1501-2015. Are there any other requests from members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the City Clerk? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Public Safety Committee, ordinance 1545-2015. Technology Committee, ordinance is 1411 and 1449-2015. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1108, 1219, 1359, 1408, 1440-2015. Development Committee, ordinance is 1566 and 1567-2015.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 166X, 165X, and 164X-2015. Finance Committee, ordinance is 1454, 1494, 1504, 1517, 1551, 1573, and 1574-2015. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 1528-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 146X, 154X-2015, and ordinance is 1465, 1534, 1544, and 1575-2015. Public Safety Committee, Resolution 153X-2015, and ordinance is 908, 1495, 1598-2015. Technology Committee, ordinance is 1472, 1493, and 1561-2015. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1173, 1463, and 1466-2015. Environment Committee, ordinance 1174-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 1483, 1520-2015. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance 1124-2015, and appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0085, 97, 98, 99, 100, 101, 102, 103-2015.
Thank you. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, if you'd walk to the podium, share your name, address, any organizations you represent. And I think you signed up to speak on 1528-2015. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. 1612, Arlington, and Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. First of all, I'd like to know what, will this money be used for? Instead of $327.48, I would like to see this more money to be put to use on this item, if I can get more clarification on it.
Wilkins. I think it's regarding 1528 that's in the Health and Human Services. Chair Tyson, any comments, or does the Department of Health have any additional information they'd like to provide?
That particular ordinance is for funding for individuals who may have HIV or AIDS, and provides them with the resources within the community to provide services to them. That's what that will, I mean, it's dollars that will go to some nonprofit organizations who will provide those resources.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any additional questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Further discussion? If not, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Harden, Klein, Mills.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 1573-2015 and 1173-2015, on which I am abstaining.
Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Yes, consent agenda carries. We now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Councilmember, Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening. Tonight in the Finance Committee, we will convene a public hearing to discuss the second reading of Resolution Number 0138X-2015. It is to adopt the 2016 tax budget and to authorize and direct the City Auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency. First, may I have a motion to remove the resolution from the table?
Second. Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. As we begin, I'd like to note that the passage of this resolution and the filing of this tax budget with the Franklin, Fairfield, and Delaware County Budget Commissions will entitle the City of Columbus to participate in local government funds, which are monies collected by the state of Ohio and shared with its various political subdivisions via the counties. To qualify this, to qualify, this legislation must be filed with the county no later than July 20 of this year. It is for this reason that also emergency action is required. The tax budget will also establish property tax rates for the City of Columbus for calendar year of 2016. Please note that this report is solely referencing the property taxes that can be imposed by the City of Columbus. It is important to emphasize that this piece of legis, this legislation, most importantly, does not increase our increased taxes. This legislation is telling the County Budget Commission, which consists of county, the county auditor, the county treasurer, and the county prosecutor, that we are not seeking any increase in property tax rates. It does not apply to any other taxes. It does not relate to the property taxes levied by the school district. It does not relate to any other property taxes that are levied by the county, and it does not relate to property taxes levied by the county MRDD or any other social service agencies. This is an annual piece of legislation. It is a vehicle by which the City of Columbus and City Council informs the Franklin County Budget Commission of the property tax rate to levy in the City of Columbus. This information has been compiled as a collaborative effort between the City Auditor's Office and the Department of Finance. And now I would like to recognize Auditor Hugh Dorian. Mr. Auditor Dorian.
Thank you, Chairwoman Tyson and all Council members. That explanation was very, very correct. I certainly concur with those comments. I might add that when you think of property taxes, tax rates in the City of Columbus, and I want to emphasize the city, and I'm not including in these comments other entities such as school districts, counties, and various other public agencies. But when you focus strictly on the City of Columbus, the last property tax rate increase took place in 1954. That rate was reduced in 1955 and further reduced in 1956. It has remained the same since 1956. And it's no coincidence that that is the same year that the city began its income tax set aside, where we take a portion of our income tax, now 25% of our income tax, and set it aside to pay for capital improvements that many before that time were paid for by your property tax. I'd also add that filing this document will also make the city eligible to participate in the local government funds, funds that are collected by the state of Ohio and distributed, some directly to the city, others to the cities by way of the counties. So it's a very, very important document. It's a collaboration between the Department of Finance and the City Auditor's Office. Their ordinance is 35 to 40 pages long, a massive amount of detail. But in order to establish the same property tax rate next year as we have this year and have for the past over 50 years, and to make the city eligible for the local government funds, I encourage you and ask that you adopt the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Dorian. And in regards to the local government fund, I know that we've had receipts in 2014. That was about $21.2 million, and we're anticipating about the same amount for 2015. So this is really important to our, really important to the finances of our city. And so with that, thank you again, Mr. Dorian. Is there anyone from the administration or Department of Finance who would like to make any additional comments?
No additional comments from Finance. You characterized it quite well.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers? Seeing none, this officially ends our public hearing on Resolution Number 0138X-2015. So I would like to move to adopt Resolution Number 0138X-2015, which will adopt the 2016 tax budget and authorize and direct the City Auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you very much. All right. Ordinance Number 1552-2015 is to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the City Auditor to transfer funds within the general improvement permanent fund, improvement fund, I'm sorry, to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Fleet Management Division to establish purchase orders from previously established UT, Universal Term Contracts, UTCs, for the purchase of vehicles for use by various city departments, and to enter into contracts for the purpose, for the purchase of additional vehicles and upfitting, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $501,234.79 from the Special Income Tax Fund, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $1,914,976.29 from the General Permanent Improvement Fund and to declare an emergency. This is the second wave of ordinances for vehicles for the City of Columbus, and this ordinance authorizes the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders with buyers Ford and statewide Ford Lincoln. They also will, not to buy those vehicles, but also for upfit of those vehicles, upfitting of the van bin packages, prisoner transport inserts, ladder tracks and partitions, cab and chassis upfitting, and also to install our anti-idling technology. There'll be 42 vehicles purchased with this legislation. These vehicles will be, these are older vehicles with high mileage, and they will be replaced with fuel-efficient vehicles, and they will reduce our overall maintenance costs and petroleum fuel consumption. And so with that, I would like to move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. I would now like to move to a number of ordinances that we will pass in regards to an upcoming bond sale. These bonds will total up to $376 million. And in this legislation, you will find there will be some ordinance, ordinances that will be unlimited, which are, the bonds have been voted on by the residents of Columbus, either in the 2008. It's a little bit of money from the 2008 voter bond package, and the majority of the, the majority of these bonds are the 2013 bond package. There also will be, issue a note in the amount not to exceed $14,500,000 to refund the city's outstanding various purpose limited tax notes series of 2014, and the, which was the principal amount was $18 million recently. Mr. Dorian, is that correct? That's correct. Thank you very much. And so, with that, I'm going to start to read the different ordinances. Ordinance Number 1576-2015, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $20,445,000 for public safety and health-related projects. And I will, and this ordinance authorizes, again, the $20,445,000 for public safety and health-related projects in Section 55B of the City Charter. And I move for pa, with, I'm sorry, waive second reading, and move for passage.
Second. On the wave second reading. [inaudible] Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1577-2015, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $38,175,000 for the recreation and park-related projects of Section 55B of the City Charter. I first move to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. And now move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1578-2015, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $102,125,000 for the street and highway, and refuse collection projects. A Section 55B of the City Charter, I first move to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank, I move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1579-2015, and it is to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $96,775,000 for water storm and water power projects. And I would, Section 55B of the City Charter, I moved to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. Move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1580-2015, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,945,000 for water projects, Section 55B of the City Charter. First, I move to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
And move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is, ordinance Number 1581-2015, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $160,000 for city attorney and human service, human resources projects, Section 55B of the City Charter. First, I move to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
And I move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
And before I read this ordinance, I want, have Mr. Dorian may want to say a few words about this particular one. This is to, ordinance 1582-2015, because this is one that's probably a little different than the others. All the others are pretty much the traditional, traditional capital projects, but this particular one is non-traditional, and I want, and it is to authorize the issuance one is non-traditional, and I want, and it is to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed seventy-three million, four hundred and five thousand dollars for construction management projects. Mr. Dorian?
You'll have some instances where we are required to issue taxable bonds as opposed to tax-exempt bonds. One example is where we have our CNG stations, our compressed natural gas stations, where the city intends to sell some of that to other entities. So when you're selling it and deriving a benefit to help pay for the bonds and so forth, that puts you in a taxable environment. So this taxable environment is much the lesser part of all of these issues, but it does come about from time to time.
Thank you. And so this is section fifty-five B of the city charter, and I first moved to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And now move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Then ordinance number fifteen eighty-three dash two thousand and fifteen, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in amount not to exceed eight million, three hundred thousand dollars for fleet management projects, section fifty-five B of the city charter. I move to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
And I move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Mr. Dorian?
Madam Chairwoman, I think I gave you a correct answer, but maybe to the wrong question. Your question was about the one ordinance which is somewhat non-traditional in its sense. That ordinance pertains to the new office building that will be going up to, a little bit to our north, and to the parking garage immediately across the street. So that's the, I think that's the answer to the, correct answer to the correct question. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right. It's ordinance number fifteen eighty-four dash two thousand and fifteen, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed two million, eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars for information services projects, and this section fifty-five B of the city charter. First I move to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And I move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Ordinance number fifteen eighty-five dash two thousand and fifteen, is to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed thirteen million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for economic and community development projects, section fifty-five B of the city charter, and I move to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Ordinance number fifteen eighty-six dash two thousand and fifteen, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds, which are federally taxable, in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the recreation and parks projects, projects, section fifty-five B of the city charter, and first move to waive second reading.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And then ordinance number fifteen eighty-seven dash two thousand and fifteen, and it is to authorize the issuance of limited tax notes in the amount not to exceed fourteen million, five hundred thousand dollars to refund the outstanding bond anticipation notes issued for the purpose of financing the cost of the transportation projects, section fifty-five B of the city charter. And I'm going to let Mr. Dorian say a few words about those parking garages. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. These two parking garages owned by the city, you're familiar with the one on South Front Street, still titled the Lazarus Garage, and the one on Fourth and Elm Streets, about a block north of Broad Street, East Broad Street. Both of these garages are doing very, very well. There's, never has been a penny of income tax been needed to support these garages. So we're actually paying down this debt very, very nicely over the last five or six years. The money to pay this debt comes from basically three sources. It comes from the net income of the garages, which has been very, very fruitful. It also comes for the Fourth and Elm garage from a special assessment on business property owners in the neighborhood, and from the downtown TIF. So the cash flow has been quite excellent, and frankly, I expect it to continue that way. So I ask you to adopt the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian. And with that, I will move to waive second reading.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And the last ordinance in Finance is ordinance number sixteen oh eight dash two thousand and fifteen, to authorize the finance and management director to modify a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Alumni Roofing Company for the renovation of the roof for the Division of Police at two thousand seventy-seven Parkwood Avenue to authorize expenditure of nine hundred, nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars from previous established auditor certificate and to declare an emergency. I would move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And that's all I have in Finance this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Harden chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have one ordinance, fourteen fifty-three dash twenty fifteen, to amend the two thousand and fifteen capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the streets and highways bond, bond fund, to authorize the director of public service to enter into contract with G and G Cement Contractors in connection with the resurfacing two thousand and fifteen concrete rehabilitation project, and to amend the two thousand and fifteen capital improvement budget and to authorize the expenditure of up to nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents from the street and highway improvement funds to pay for this project and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is part of the Department's Public Services two thousand and fifteen resurfacing efforts, and in particular, this ordinance will resurface the city's concrete streets. In particular, the ordinance will repave streets in need in Northland, Northwest area, West Sciota, and parts of the East Side. And if there are no further questions, I'm, or comments, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all we have in Public Service this evening. Thank you, President Ginter.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Our next committee is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Public Safety tonight, fourteen oh five, two thousand and fifteen, to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Support Services to enter into a contract with Motorola Corporation Sound Communications and Locution for the second phase of upgrading the city's eight hundred megahertz radio system from an analog to a P twenty-five digital system in accordance with the sole source provisions of the Columbus City Code, to enter a contract with Agile Network Builders LLC under the state term contract for network connectivity, to authorize the city auditor appropriate and transfer nine point five million dollars from the special income tax fund to the public safeties capital funds, to authorize the expenditure of eight million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents from the public safety capital improvement fund, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of two million dollars within the public utilities fund, to amend the two thousand and fifteen capital improvements budget and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director.
President Ginter, Chairman Klein, members of council, this is the second of two ordinances that we have brought before council, the first one being last year for a like amount of funding for public safety to upgrade to a digital eight hundred megahertz radio system. This is the backbone of our radio communications, not only for public safety, but also in public utilities and in public service and other city departments. The, the industry is moving to digital. It is getting more difficult for us to get parts and do repairs. In addition, the federal government is, is looking across the public safety spectrums and asking us to convert to digital. This will increase our coverages, it'll increase our interoperability, and as candidly, the decision was made many years ago that Motorola for our public safety forces would be the standard. We have had them for decades, and therefore, obviously waiving bidding and, and asking council to entertain the second phase of this purchase tonight. It is anticipated that we will be up and running sometime mid-two thousand and sixteen under the digital requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Next is fourteen forty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, to authorize the finance and management director to enter into a contract with Farber Specialty Vehicles for the purchase of a hazardous material response vehicle for the division of fire to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, chapter three twenty-nine, to amend the two thousand and fifteen capital improvement budget, and transfer funds between projects to authorize the expenditure of eight hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred dollars from the public safeties capital improvements fund and to declare an emergency. Sir?
President Ginter, Chairman Klein, members of council, this is authorizing the purchase of a hazmat vehicle for division of fire. This will replace an existing vehicle that is approximately twenty years old. This contract was advertised for bid in February. There were four respondents to that bid. None of the four vendors met the specifications in its entirety. Under the advice of our purchasing office, we initiated negotiations initially with the low bid. They did not agree to meet our specification at the bid price. Therefore, we went to the second low bid, which is Farber. They did agree to meet our specification at the bid price, and therefore, is our recommendation to enter in a contract with them, and of course, with a bid waiver, given that we had four unresponsive bidders. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
And a piece in Public Utilities on page ten, if we could move there, Council President, fifteen oh one, two thousand and fifteen, I request the table indefinitely.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
And then a piece in Rules and Reference, Council President, if I move there, sixteen ninety-five, two thousand and fifteen, to extend the date set forth in section five ninety oh seven of the Columbus City Code pertaining to the expiration of peer-to-peer transportation network driver's license, to repeal ordinance fifteen sixty-three, two thousand and fifteen, and declare an emergency. If you recall, last week, we repealed the extension, for the purpose of extending the time for driver's license for peer-to-peer networks. This is to rectify a technical issue in last week's ordinance. The purpose is still the same, to extend for the driver's license and to ensure that the companies, like an Uber, any other peer-to-peer company pays the annual fees, ensuring they pay the annual fee extending it for the individual drivers, and this is just to rectify a technicality. I move for passage.
Second. Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Development Committee. President Protem Mills chairs the committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight in Development, I have the following ordinance, beginning with ordinance one five zero nine dash two thousand and fifteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contract with Graffiti Protective Coatings, Inc., for services associated with the graffiti abatement assistance program, and to authorize expenditure of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars from an existing auditor certificate and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is co-sponsored along with me with Councilmember Klein. This will authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter a contract with Graffiti Protective Coatings to provide the abatement services within the city of Columbus, and these services will allow the city to remove graffiti from varie, from various surfaces on a variety of structures, such as, but not limited to, occupy private residential structures, occupy commercial structures, fences, garages, and where the owner has provided prior authorization to enter and remove the graffiti. The Department of Development exercised due diligence by completing a competitive bid process in compliance with Columbus City Code three twenty-nine, and there were two responding bidders to the RFP. After reviewing the bids, it was recommended that the award be made to Graffiti Protective Coatings, Inc. Councilmember Klein, do you have any comments on this legislation?
Thank you, Council President Protem Mills. I'd just like to thank you and council, as well as the administration, for continuing this program that I have noticed personally, just driving around, seeing less graffiti. I can tell you, when we first got on council, Councilmember Mills and I, which is the genesis of this program, you know, we go to the community meetings and just get hammered about graffiti, her from a safety perspective, once she chaired safety, and me from development, we've now obviously switched, but it's still that, that, that percolating discussion out there about graffiti in the neighborhoods. This program has gone miles to rectify the situation, and appreciate Director Shoney for his leadership in continuing on the graffiti abatement program, and for the citizens of the city of Columbus for believing in it and using it to its advantage. So please call three-one-one if you have any graffiti abatement needs, and the city is here to make sure we have a clean, safe city for us to live in and to raise our families in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Director Shoney, do you have any comments to add to this legislation?
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Council, Councilmember Klein, President Ginter, members of council, I just would like to thank council for funding this program. It is one of our more popular programs. The, the community really takes advantage of it, and it's important to removing one element of the blight in our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Shoney. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Next I have ordinance one five nine four dash two thousand and fifteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to contract with various companies to provide emergency home repair services to low and moderate income households in Columbus as part of the emergency repair program, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, to authorize expenditure of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the community development block grant fund and to declare an emergency. This, our, the RFP that was issued out to obtain services from contractors, authorized a uniform cost, and so the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code must be waived. Reaching a uniform cost will allow the program to go far and serve as many people with all the uniform costs related to emergency repair services, such as heating, plumbing, electrical, and other emergency repairs needed to protect the health and safety of citizens of Columbus. The CDBG Affordable Housing Opportunity Fund represents the city's commitment to the preservation and production of housing units affordable to very low, low and moderate income individuals, and the funds will be used to meet housing needs identified by our consolidated plan. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Next I have Environment Committee. May I move forward, President Ginter? An Environment Committee of ordinance one one zero nine dash two thousand and fifteen, to authorize the finance and management director to enter into a contract with the option to purchase three hundred gallon automated refuge containers and parts on an as-needed basis with Snyder Industries, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of one dollar to establish the contract from the general fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of chapter three twenty-nine of the city code and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Next I have ordinance one two four seven dash two thousand and fifteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to accept and enter into the Ohio Environmental Education Fund grant agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for the development of a green infrastructure workforce development program, to authorize a matching commitment from a professional services agreement with T and M Associates to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the Storm Sewer Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, President Protem Mills. Our next committee is the Education Committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. This evening in education, we have ordinance thirteen ninety-three dash two thousand and fifteen, to authorize and direct the Director of Education to enter into contracts with quality pre-kindergarten organizations to provide- provide educational services, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of up to $4,222,950 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. We had a public hearing on this ordinance back on June 10th and discussed how we would like to continue to provide funding to local pre-kindergarten organizations so that we are able to work with our young four-year-olds and to provide quality pre-K education to them so that they are kindergarten-ready. I would like to ask Director Johnson to speak briefly on why she's requesting that we waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, Section 329, and also to address briefly the program and the award process.
Thank you, Councilmember Chair Page, President Ginther, members of city council. The process that we use for granting awards is based on the process that the state uses to expand pre-K in the state. Additionally, our awards only go to providers in this city who have at least a three-star or higher rating under the state's Step Up to Quality rating, five being the highest star that you can receive. So we have raised the bar this year and require that we only award grants to high-quality providers in the city. So only those who were eligible were those who had three-star ratings and were able to articulate this in a grant process as to how they would be able to provide high-quality pre-K with their children. This is also the type of process that is used with human services contracts, and the application process was open to all providers in the city who would serve four-year-olds with, as I said, with a Step Up to Quality rating of three, four, or five.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from council? Councilman Klein?
Thank you, Chair Page. Just to note that we need quality, universal access to pre-kindergarten in this country, and the lack of commitment from our federal officials and the lack of commitment from our state officials to provide universal quality pre-kindergarten access is appalling. The evidence is there that universal quality pre-K sets a solid foundation for the growth of young individuals as they begin their educational career. And I know Director Johnson, who has been in the trenches as a teacher, working with Columbus Public Schools, knows firsthand the importance of universal quality pre-kindergarten. And it's my hope that these funds can kickstart access to universal quality pre-K in the city and set a solid standard of what should be the norm, the norm for every kid in the United States, the norm. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Klein. I would now like to ask Ms. Misty Norman, she is one of the pre-K education providers, to come up and speak in support of this legislation.
Thank you, city council members and President Ginther. And I apologize, I am a little nervous. I'm used to speaking to little ones, but I thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the preschool program, The Early Start. And Councilmember Klein, your passion and your compassion of universal preschool is imperative. It is, it's a need. We have 176 children that we serve, 76 of which are preschool. And just to see the benefits of having a preschool program, but more specifically in a high-quality early learning center, not just a daycare. When we accepted the challenge to have this grant or apply for the grant, we were a little intimidated because it only gave us a year to be able to prepare these children for kindergarten. And that is a pretty awesome task because some of these children come with no background of learning, no ABCs, they don't know how to write their name, they have no background of learning. And so we had an awesome challenge to be able to prepare them, but we met the challenge and we were not the only ones. And so I just want to encourage everyone to continue to fight for universal preschool. Like you said, the statistics shows that it is a need. We see the difference of children attending preschool and children going into kindergarten without having preschool, and it's just, hands down, it's a need. And so the organization or the community that we're in, it's low-income. And 90% of our families are low-income, and they just cannot afford subsidized childcare. So this grant has given us the opportunity to serve 20 children. We were able to open up another classroom, and our parents are just elated. We had taken pre-assessments when the children came in and post-assessments, and we have the data to verify that it's working. And I speak on behalf of all of the providers that received the grant, that we have the data to verify that this program is working and it is a need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norman, for coming down. We have a few comments for you. Yes, Norman. Councilwoman Tyson?
Thank you, Ms. Norman. Thank you for coming down and sharing your comments this evening. Also, thank you for the work that you do each and every day to work with our young people to prepare them to go to kindergarten and to move forward. Certainly know that this, I know this legislation is around $4.2 million and certainly doesn't take care of all the children in the Columbus City. But this is certainly a start, and we certainly, just with the passion of Councilmember Klein, certainly is something that we do need to make sure that in the private sector, the other levels of government understand the importance of this because we know we have many children who need these services. And if we don't provide those services, we certainly have to pay in another way because those kids are behind, and once you get behind in school, you almost stay behind in school unless you have to have some significant intervention. So I appreciate the work that Director Johnson, the Councilwoman Page is doing, as well as the work that you and all the other organizations who are receiving these funds, and hopefully with the passion of this body and the work that you guys are doing, that we can get other people involved in this because I know it is costly to send people to school, but there's also a cost not to do it. So thank you very much for your work.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairwoman Page.
Thank you, Ms. Norman, and thank you, Councilwoman Tyson. I do thank both Director Johnson and Ms. Misty Norman for their testimony this evening. And if there are no further questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Harten, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. I have nothing further in education.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Anything else to come before council this evening? If not, we do have two non-agenda speakers that will take momentarily, and we will reconvene for zoning shortly after 6:30. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, clerk call the roll.
Harten, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers momentarily. It's received by the city clerk.
No, there is not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are none.
Now go to the zoning committee. I chair that committee. All members serve on the committee. First this evening in zoning, we have 0648-2015, to grant a variance from the provisions of Section 3370.05, permitted uses of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 2188 City Gate Drive, 43219, to permit a limited accessory spectator assembly area within an office/warehouse tenant space in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Darren Ranker, 5980 Wilcox Place, Suite J, Dublin, Ohio, 43016. The proposed use is limited accessory spectator assembly area within an office/warehouse tenant space. The Northeast Area Commission recommended disapproval. The city department's recommendation is approval. Is there anyone here from the Northeast Area Commission this evening? Because we had neighborhood disapproval, I'm going to ask Ms. Pine to share a brief presentation for council members.
Good evening. The site is owned in the LM Limited Manufacturing District and is developed with an office/warehouse complex. The requested council variance will permit the occupant of one tenant space the ability to operate a limited accessory spectator assembly area in conjunction with their office distribution video gaming facility for up to 24 video game competition events per year. The site is located within the planning area of the Northeast Area Plan, which recommends office and light industrial uses. The site also lies within the planning area of the Port Columbus Joint Economic Strategy, which recommends light industrial uses. A council variance is necessary in that the limitation overlay text adopted as part of ordinance 941-97 allows only limited uses permitted in the M2 manufacturing district and certain accessory commercial uses, of which spectator assembly uses are not included. Staff supports the request because the primary use of the facility is a light industrial and office use. The events are conducted indoors, are scheduled on weekends or after normal business hours, are restricted to 432 square feet of their 11,457 square foot facility, and are only up to 24 times per year, and are limited to a maximum of 250 people, which mitigates potential impacts of the proposed spectator assembly use on the adjacent office and industrial users. Approval of this request will not introduce an incompatible use to the area. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginther. I know that on this legislation, I know that there seems to be, was some confusion on, maybe, not, I shouldn't say confusion, let me just say that there was some thoughts between the words "gaming" and people perceiving it to be gambling. And I know that, I think, our attorney, Josh Cox, addressed that issue and that there was no gambling going on with the video gaming. Would that be correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I do want to give an opportunity to the applicant as well to come forward and say a few words. So Darren Rucker, Ranker, Mr. Ranker, you present? Would you come forward to the podium and maybe just share a few words regarding the application and the proposed use? Could you just share your name, address, any organizations you represent?
Darren Ranker. I'm an architect with Carney Ranker Architects in Dublin, Ohio. 59, I'm sorry, 5980 Suite J, Wilcox Place, Dublin, Ohio. This whole thing started with a search for a building that they happened to find in an area that the building was pretty much tailor-made for their use in their business. I got involved in this project as the architect to do some minimal renovation-type work. We submitted the drawings to the city of Columbus, and that's when it was determined that there was an issue with the zoning. Since the time we've talked to the city, they've allowed us a limited-time occupancy permit. We've been under that temporary for about six or seven months now. Since then, there have been no complaints, as far as I know of, of, like Shannon said, these events are after-hours on weekends. They're very limited, up to 24 times a year, all indoor. We have letters that were submitted as far as businesses, the amount of revenue that these events are contributing to the city of Columbus with respect to hotels and what have you. So we see this as a very positive thing.
Any questions for Mr. Ranker? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down tonight. Any other questions or comments regarding this legislation this evening? If not, first I'd move to request to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Harten, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended to emergency and finally move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harten, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next, we have 1460-2015, to rezone 6,000 Riverside Drive, 43017, being 26.55 plus or minus acres, located at the northeast corner of Riverside and Riverside Green Drive, from CPD Commercial Plan Development and Institutional Districts to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Jerry Kuyth, Friendship Village of Dublin, Ohio Incorporated, care of Mike Milligan, JMM Architects, 4685 Larwell Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 43220. Proposed use is assisted living nursing home and housing for the elderly. Development Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation from council members? If not, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harten, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next, we have 1490-2015, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District Use, 3312.21 Landscaping and Screening, 3312.25 Maneuvering, 3312.29 Parking Space, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3321.01 Dumpster Area, 3332.05 Area District Lot Width Requirements, 3332.15 R4 Area District Requirements, 3332.19 Fronting on a Public Street, 3332.21B Building Lines, 3332.25 Maximum Side Yards Required, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, 3332.27 Rear Yard, and 3332.28 Side or Rear Yard Obstruction of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1499 Elmwood Avenue, 43212, to permit two separate dwellings on the same lot for four contiguous lots with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District, and to repeal ordinance number 0321-2014, passed on March 3, 2014. The applicant is Jason S. Dodgy, care of David L. Hodge, Attorney, Smith &amp; Hale LLC, 37 West Broad Street, Suite 460, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Proposed use is a single unit in a two-unit dwelling and carriage house development. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation from council members? If not, I move to request to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Harten, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended to emergency, finally move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harten, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next is 1518-2015, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District, 3356.03 C4 Permitted Uses, 3309.14 Height Districts, 3312.13B Driveway, 3312.49 C Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3312.53 Minimum Number of Loading Spaces Required, 3332.18D Basis of Computing Area, 3332.25 Maximum Side Yards Required, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, 3332.27 Rear Yard, 3332.29 Height District, and 3372.604A Setback Requirements of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 97 East Fifth Avenue, 43201, to permit a mixed-use development with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential and C4 Commercial Districts. The applicant is Burwell Investments LLC, care of Jackson B. Reynolds, the third attorney, Smith &amp; Hale LLC, 37 West Broad Street, Suite 460, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Proposed use is mixed-use development. The Italian Village Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. We do have a speaker slip on this issue, so I guess first we will ask for a staff presentation.
The site is comprised of five parcels which are within the urban commercial overlay. The two western parcels are undeveloped and are zoned R4 Residential and C4 Commercial Districts. The three eastern parcels were previously used as a taxi parking maintenance facility zoned in the C4 commercial district. The requested council variance will allow the development of a six-story maximum-height mixed-use building with up to 62 apartment building, or I'm sorry, with up to 62 residential units, a three-story mixed-use building with four residential units, and a three-story eight-unit apartment building, for a total of 12,000 square feet of commercial space and up to 74 apartment units. Requested variances include commercial use in R4, ground-floor residential use in the C4 district with increased height, reduced driveway width, a reduction of 48 required parking spaces, no loading space, and a reduced yard and area standards for the R4 parcel. The request is consistent with recent infill development proposals in historic urban neighborhoods and has been recommended for approval by the Italian Village Commission. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Any questions for Ms. Pine? And I skipped a step, and my lawyer will be reminding me I skipped a step if I don't fix it right now. So if there are any folks here to testify either for or against any legislation, and I believe we have, since we have a speaker slip on this issue, that would include Mike, is it Michael Esman? So Mr. Esman and any of the zoning staff that are providing testimony, if you'd please stand. And... Let's see here. I intend to give all testimony that is true and accurate on this legislation here this evening. If so, please repeat. I will.
I will.
Our speaker, we have one speaker who is, I believe, against this legislation, but has written in on their speaker slip that they're concerned, not necessarily against. So at this point, I'll ask Mr., actually, I'll let the applicant come up first, if there's any statement from the applicant that they'd like to make, or do you simply want to hold off and offer a rebuttal? First, we'll hear from Mr. Esman. If you'd just share your name, address, any organizations you represent. You have three minutes to speak to the ordinance.
Thank you, council. Michael Esman, 1156 Summit Street, Columbus. I live just down the street of the property. I've lived there about 11 years. I own the house, and just concerned about the height variance. Everything on that street is like my house or a building similar, maybe 40 feet height. If we're talking about putting a five- to six-story building right up to the corner there, right on the street, I just think that that's going to dwarf everything else in the neighborhood, and I have concerns about what that's going to look like, just one property that's six stories high, surrounded by homes that have been there 100 years. So I appreciate Mr. Reynolds showing me the plan, walking through some things. I'm not against the development of it, it's merely just the height, I think. I thought it was five stories, but I understand now it could be six. Is that correct?
The height variance is for 75 feet maximum.
Anything else you'd like to share, Mr. Esman?
No, that'd be my concern.
Any questions for Mr. Esman before we allow the applicant an opportunity for a rebuttal? Thank you, Mr. Esman.
Thanks.
Good evening, Councilman Ginther, President Ginther, councilmembers. My name's Jack Reynolds. I'm an attorney with Smith &amp; Hale. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. We are in the Italian Village Commission area, and as a part of that process, we are required to go through architectural review and comment and approval. And so we have been in front of them in terms of requesting their support on the variances that you see before you this evening. And in requesting the height that our neighbor was concerned about, there were a number of concerns generated on behalf of the Italian Village Commission as well. They understood that they would be looking at the height of the building in the future and that it would have to be appropriate to the area, not simply allowing the individuals to go to 75 feet in height simply because there was a variance. They were very clear as they made their recommendations at their meeting to support this, that by saying they support 75 feet, there is no guarantee that that would happen in their area. So what we got from that meeting with the Italian Village is that it would be more than likely that the height of the building would be less than 75 feet. We didn't know how much shorter, so that's why we're here this evening, simply as a cap, and that we will work with the Italian Village Commission in order to come up with a height that is appropriate to the area. Again, the height is primarily for the main building which faces towards Fifth, and it turns the corner onto Summit for a small distance because there is a cut-through in order to access the parking garage to the rear of the main building. When it steps down, there'll be a three-story building that abuts the parking garage to the south. So again, there will be a step-down to the community towards the hard corner of Summit and Fifth. So again, the idea is to step down from height to three stories to two stories and then back into the neighborhood. So again, we're sensitive to the height issue. We will work with Italian Village in order to accomplish that, and I can answer any questions.
Hey, Mr. Reynolds. Any questions for Mr. Reynolds? Councilmember Paley?
Just for the sake of the speaker, maybe Ms. Pine or Mr. Edwards could explain the process about the variance and how it has to be approved after today. I just think that might make him more comfortable.
Yes, the Italian Village Commission that's attached with this ordinance is only for the council variance, and before building permits can be applied for, a certificate of appropriateness needs to be issued by the area commission, and all of the drawings, including elevation drawings, need to be stamped by the commission, and those documents will be submitted to my department for the building permit.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from councilmembers? Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Is there any other questions or comments? First, I'd move to amend as submitted to the clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended and finally move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Legislation is passed. Our next piece of legislation is 1536-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3367.01 M2 manufacturing uses, 3363.19C location requirements, Columbus City Codes for the property located at 662 North Hague Avenue, 43204, to permit a brewery with accessory tasting room and retail sales with reduced distance separation in the M2 manufacturing district. The applicant is Four String Brewery Company, care of Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney, Smith &amp; Hale, 37 West Broad Street, Suite 460, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed use is brewery with accessory tasting room and retail sales. Greater Hilltop Area Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. Is there any questions or comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, I move to amend to emergency. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended to emergency and finally move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Is there anything else to come before the zoning committee this evening? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned.